Call this meeting to order and for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will have roll call, please. Patty.
City Council, Crowls.
Yes.
Solvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Gulickson.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. Okay, we shall begin once again with Mayor Waller's quote for the day. This one actually is pretty relevant for me. This is by Joyce Mayer. Patience is not simply the ability to wait, it's how we behave while we're waiting. That being said, um, we shall move on to the approval of the agenda, but before we do that, are there any additions or corrections? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Citizens comments, I don't see really anybody in the audience that would like to approach the council, so we shall move on. We do not have any public hearings tonight, so we will move on to reading and approval of our January ninth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes.
I will motion to approve the, uh, regular meeting minutes of January ninth, twenty twenty-four.
I will second.
Motion and a second to approve the January ninth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And we'll move on to the condensed version of the same minutes.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes from January ninth.
I will second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the January ninth condensed version of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, we have the consent agenda, which consists of the audit of city bills and the gambling reports.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
I will second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Now I will bring it back to the council if there's any discussion or questions on any of the items. Oh yeah, line fifty-seven, I was just had a question about the, it's, uh, Stubbs Marine Fire Department donation, eighteen hundred ninety-nine dollars. Did we buy a, was that like for a door prize donation thing, or what was that?
They bought a bolt motor with donated funds.
Oh, they bought him a, okay.
Yep, so you know, you approved a couple of different donations over the last few meetings, so then they, one of the things they bought was a bolt motor for the rescue.
Okay, for our boat that we have, we saw that at the, do we use that much? I guess we probably haven't.
Just when you need it. Yeah, I, I was out, it wasn't used real often, but they were out to retrieve, uh, man fell in the river out past the airport and was winding in the river.
Yep.
Was out there. It's, it's used occasionally. Some duck hunters out on Palm Deterre were out duck hunting and a ice chunk broke off and they went out and rescued them off ice, so. It gets used, but not real often.
Well, so we, um, assuming we had them over, but they must have just upgraded and got a better one.
They had a sheriff's rig. I think it was a, I'm not sure whatever happened to that if it.
Okay. Well, you know, if you gotta have it, you gotta have it. It's when you need it.
I think they went to more of a flat bottom that was probably easier to get into some of the shallow waters or off the, the beaten paths where that other one was more of a, like a sixteen-foot fishing boat or a Lund V bottom that was probably pretty tough to get into some of the, the shallow waters or.
Okay.
Would be my guess on what, what the, the route they've gone to.
Well, I think it sounds like a great use of the donation money. Any other discussion on any of the other items? Hearing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We shall move on to petitions, requests, and communications. First up is, uh, we have to accept a donation from the Fraternal Order of the Eagles for a handicap park swing.
I will move approval of the donation from the Eagles, six twenty for fifteen hundred dollars for a handicap park swing.
I'll second.
Thank you to Eagles for their donation.
Yeah, that's a nice, nice donation. That should take care of that.
Actually, I've got a couple more coming. Uh, Hockey has agreed to give us some money. They're still working on it. And then there's one other organization that had asked for me to come and request funds when I've been at some of the other ones, so yes, nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Cause I think all of those, I mean, we've got it the last time too, so.
I think with this one here or with the, the other one that's coming, I think a total of about forty-five hundred dollars, so yeah, just nice to see our pull tabs coming back in to do something for our community.
Thanks for the legwork on that too, Jeff.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the donation for the, from the Fraternal Order of the Eagles for the handicap park swing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay, next is, uh, appoint Jeff Richardson to the planning commission. I don't know if you people know Jeff. I happen to know him. I think he's a fine gentleman. That's Monique's husband.
He actually signed up to run for city council, remember when they first come to town and then retracted or pulled back, but.
Yeah, he came to a few meetings and my Monique and then I, I think is the time commitment probably wasn't gonna be right with him, cause he worked at Superior.
Concrete.
Where?
It's, uh, Hancock Concrete.
Yeah, Hancock Concrete, that's right. Okay.
Is that a replacement?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Okay, moving to Dolly. Okay.
Does that fill up, fill up the planning commission then?
They were, they were, uh, they had obviously every seat filled, um, one individual was potentially moving during the year, so as opposed to replacing them there. And his term was up, as I recall, um, he did not renew and, uh, Mr. Richardson actually wrote a letter to the planning commission requesting to be on, so. It's, it's nice to see some, not having to twist an arm, right?
Somebody that's interested, that wants to help and serve, yes, great.
So, uh, I don't believe we have a second, but I will second.
I don't know, did we have a first?
I don't know if we had a first.
Then I will. I thought Jeff had the first.
Okay, we got a first.
I haven't, but I sure will. I would like the motion that we bring Jeff Richardson on for the planning commission.
All right, we got a first and a second. We got that covered. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, last up for the petitions portion of it is an application to conduct excluded bingo by Morris Women of Today. Excluded bingo. What's excluded bingo?
No idea.
I don't know, I just.
But I think it sounds interesting, so I'll go ahead and.
Well, with the hot trends now going on with the statewide where you can have the length, if, if that would be the, just having your single game instead of the length, like a lot of the stuff is statewide now. That's affiliated through the gambling or through the, the state lottery where you play and it's all over the state, but. I don't know, that's a good question. I was, I was wondering too, but.
Well, the unknown of excluded bingo, I'll go ahead and move approval for the application to conduct excluded bingo by the Morris Women of Today.
I will second that. Okay, we shall take a vote here on the application to conduct excluded bingo by the Morris Women of Today. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Stomach is growing, man. Ordinances and resolutions.
Nerves.
Sorry folks. Bothering you.
Big snacks.
I think I'm gonna be okay. Uh, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up is a resolution authorizing interfund loan airport runway extension project. Becca, would you like to speak to that at all, if you were?
Yeah, so these are just kind of some year-end housekeeping items, um, that need to happen. Funds, uh, being used throughout the year and we just haven't gotten the funds in yet.
Okay.
Yep, so it's basically just to eliminate a negative cash balance at the end of the year. And so it's, we're just borrowing some funds from two of two until the beginning of twenty twenty-four, we'll reverse it back out. Cause we're, it's a timing of the close all processes of the projects and such, so we had to spend the money in order to get reimbursed. There's just always that lag, so we have them about every year, about this time of year, asking you guys to approve the interfund loan transfers, so nothing new, but only happen once a year, so. There was two funds that needed a little supplement for the time being.
Okay.
I will move approval of a resolution authorizing interfund loan airport runway extension project funds.
No second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the resolution authorizing interfund loan airport runway extension project. We shall have roll call vote on that, please. Patty.
Council member Crowls.
Yes.
Solvi.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Gulickson.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. Okay, next is a resolution authorizing interfund loan airport taxi line reconstruction project. Once again, if you, is any?
Same, same thing.
Same deal?
Mm-hmm.
Just differ, okay?
I'll, I'll move on this resolution.
I'll second.
First and a second, uh, on that resolution authorizing interfund loan airport taxi line reconstruction project. Roll call, a vote on that, please, Patty.
Council member Solvi.
Yes.
Crails.
Yes.
Gulickson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. And the last resolution before us is the resolution authorizing resolution appointing judges for presidential primary election, March fifth, twenty twenty-four. I think you have the list before you there? Okay.
I will move on that resolution appointing the judges for the presidential primary election, March fifth, twenty twenty-four.
I will second and thank you to the volunteers or the people that are stepping forward to help with this process also without people to see that everything is done properly. We can't have a good election.
For sure. Okay, we have a first and a second authorizing and appointing judges for the presidential primary election, March fifth, twenty twenty-four. And we'll have roll call vote on that resolution, please.
Council member Miller.
Yes.
Gulickson.
Yes.
Crails.
Yes.
Solvi.
Yes.
Mayor Wallers.
Yes. Okay, we shall move on to the city manager's newsletter.
So, um, there's a couple upcoming training opportunities for, um, council members. So, uh, the first, um, one we've talked about before is the Board of Appeals and Equalization Training. So if you want to get trained for that, you have to do so before February first. We only need one person on the board that is trained, so right now we currently have two, so we don't necessarily need anybody else. But if you wanna kind of learn what your role is in the, uh, appeals and equalization process, um, it's kind of a nice, nice way to see what your role is and, um, how that all works.
Pretty simple to go online. I refreshed mine here this fall. I think it took me about an hour and that's good for four years, so just highly recommend a couple of the other ones. Try to get that in if you can.
Yeah, mine expires, I see, on July first, so I may just go in and update mine too. It's pretty easy.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then there is an elected leaders institute advanced conference in Alexandria, um, that's February twenty-third and twenty-fourth. So, um, topics are crisis-ready leadership, university one-on-one, and tackling the tough stuff and the art of negotiation, so. Um, that is on the league site, if anyone wants to kind of look over the conference, but if you'd like to go, um, I believe we have a thousand dollars budgeted for you guys to go to trainings and conferences, so. Um, if you wanted to take a look and see if that timing works or if something you're interested in. So there's, there's gonna be some other ones down the line, um, you know, there's a lot of council members that goes, that go to the league, um, summer conference, I believe that's in June. So.
That's a Friday, Saturday.
Mm-hmm.
When's the registration deadline?
Um.
I gotta look at my.
I don't know, I should have looked that up. I know I had it on my sheet, but I mean.
For some reason, I think there's some.
If anyone's interested, they can swing by city hall or talk to Becca and figure out.
Yeah, I, I don't need it right now. I just thought if you had it there, that's fine. I gotta look at, talk to my wife and see what we got going on, but yeah, those things are always good. I like those.
Yeah, and I figured it's close.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
So, yeah.
Are you going?
closes February sixteenth. No, since that's an elected official's.
Okay, oh, I see, gotcha.
Won't go to that one.
Okay, sure, all right. Okay.
Um, so a couple weeks ago, I went to a discussion, um, that talked about, um, challenges facing the EMS around the state. So, uh, there's a task force that's put together to, and they're right now going around seeing kind of where, where people are at and what's going on. So a lot of challenges that they've heard from are funding shortages, staffing shortages, um, are the main, are the main ones, which are gonna then affect how quickly an ambulance gets there, um, and, and just different things like that. So the state is trying to come up with a plan to see if they wanna put something together to try and mitigate future issues, um, cause the federal government, I guess, has talked about it, but it's going pretty slow. So, um, they did, there was a, there was one city up there that really didn't want it put into LGA, cause they don't receive LGA. Like, we don't have an ambulance service, so ours is private here, so, um, but they did talk a lot about different, um, ways to try and up the Medicare, Medicaid, um, amounts given and just different things like that, so I'm sure there'll be a lot more talk on this. I think this, um, task force is going around until probably August, I think, so. Sure, we'll, we'll hear more on that, but that's something that, you know, we out in rural Minnesota are gonna see some of those, even though we don't have to put forth money into an ambulance service, we're gonna see impacts from, from some of these shortages. Um, the brew pub ordinance, so we're, we're moving on the, the brew pub, so the planning commission met at a public hearing for the zoning for February twentieth. Um, so at the meeting on the twenty-seventh, then we'll talk about the, the actual ordinance for the brew pub taproom and then the land use. And then with that, um, question came up around Christmas about serving on Christmas Day at the hotel, which our ordinance doesn't allow it. So, um, at this time when we're already working on alcohol ordinances, I thought it would be good to bring up, do we wanna change the times that are allowed to serve beer, wine, liquor, um, at different establishments, so. Right now, the ordinance states that, um, they are only supposed to serve until one state allows it to be two. Um, and then we don't allow it from four o'clock Christmas Eve and then all day Christmas Day. So, um, if that's something we wanna change to correlate with state statute, then I will get those prepared and bring those forward too. They just, I think I would, probably, I don't know why it was like this, and maybe there's a reason if you wanna keep it, but seems like it would just benefit to change it towards what the state has at two o'clock in the morning and then being allowed to serve.
I don't know why we'd wanna be more restrictive. It seems kind of like, but.
Yeah, cause the brew pub ordinance will have in there that they can serve those growlers on Sundays. We don't have to change our Sunday liquor, but I think we should look at the times for the other ones.
I think it was originally designed so that Christmas Eve, so that at four o'clock, you weren't sitting in the bar drinking all night, then you'd get home to spend Christmas Eve with your family and Christmas Day to spend it with Christmas, but yeah. Where are we at or where have things progressed or regressed from that, but just.
Well, like the hotel wanted to serve it to people who were there and they weren't, they weren't able to.
What's the state statute?
That was what I was gonna question. What is the state statute as far as?
There's no limitations for it for Christmas or Christmas Eve.
It's not, it would be recognized as a reason not to serve.
Is there, is there, is the state statute, uh, two AM to what time in the morning?
So between two and, and I think the eight o'clock that we have, that's when you can't serve it.
And that got expanded, I think, with some of the Super Bowls or sporting events in the metro where they expanded the hours beyond one o'clock. How time flies, fifteen, twenty years ago, where they extended it out to be more nationally, where you could drink till wee hours, but.
And again, this is, I mean, this is just saying you can. That doesn't mean everybody has to or.
Doesn't mean they will. Yeah.
I mean, do you think bars are gonna stay open until two?
I doubt it.
When there's nobody in there at ten are checking also with our law enforcement, seeing what, you know, if they have any.
It used to be, with COVID. But maybe, but it's.
It's down to an individual choice.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think it'd be nice to just be, you know, on the same path as the state in there. We're not, you know, consistently getting questioned about the times and why this, why that. I, I don't know why some of these were put into effect. It's just the way that, I mean, it's always been, but I don't, I, I think we need to align ourselves with something a little more.
Yeah, that could make sense.
All of that.
I like that as we're looking at stuff like this, it looks at the whole picture, not just, okay, let's change this, now let's look at this.
It doesn't mean that, and I think like you said, it doesn't mean that the, the businesses have to do any of these things. It's just that you wanna look it up, state statute, that's what it is, okay, I can or I can't. Um, it's, we don't have to answer all those questions. If they want to, they, they can, so I agree with that.
Perfect, and then the charter commission, so, um, you know, that the last meeting, it seemed kind of split, so I, I didn't, I did tell Tori the other day after you had text.
Yep.
Um, that we were waiting to see kind of where we're sitting tonight. Um, so I do have, I have one signed form from an old, um, charter commission member. The other one went out in the mail with a, an envelope to send back, so she knows that it's coming and it's, um, just gonna sign and send it back. So we only had the two, so I do have a resolution that I can bring forward to the next meeting if we have seven people. Um, Joe did state that it doesn't say in our charter that council members can't be on the commission, so if we needed other people or you guys wanted to serve on the charter commission, um, you could. And then I have one name of somebody who wants to be, um, on there. Deb and I'm gonna echo.
Econom.
Econom, Deb Econom.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's Charlie's Glassroots.
Yes, it was.
Yep, and I have three names myself, and you know, after Becca and I talked and we, we had a brief discussion about her last week, we, uh, meeting. I guess, I think it makes sense to just pause on this and just make sure we get, cause I have three and you have one and you, you guys might have some other names that come up and you wanna bring them forward. Let's just say we get ten or fifteen names and then we can discern from that fifteen, you know, we're just not ready. And I just don't want Tori to come out and, you know, it makes sense to just take this one step at a time, do it right, and, um, you know, rank in progress, you know, this was something that we all know that the charter required and none of us really knew that. So this is all kind of new to all of us, so I think we just do it right, take our time. Maybe by next meeting or something, we can set a goal for ourselves, you know, I have names. If you guys wanna maybe check with some people that you know that you think might be interested, bring those names to the next meeting and then we'll collect the names and just start that process. You think that makes sense, Becca?
I think so.
Okay.
I think so. I think it's good to have everybody that's on there have, like I said, he has a resolution prepared, once we get names.
Yep.
That then he'll send, and I think even after we get it, we don't have to wait for a judge to appoint, but then we can have her out and.
Yep.
And if we have to call a special meeting, cause it's not a fifth Tuesday, we sure can.
And that was our January thirtieth, next Tuesday thing, and so if we don't do that, which it sounds like we're not going to do, do we just wanna take Tuesday off or do you wanna try to do something else? I mean, at this point, it's probably pretty hard to throw something together next Tuesday, but if you wanna do something, we can, or if you wanna take the night off, then good either way, it's up to the council.
Do this on Tuesday, the review, are we gonna do that?
We're doing that tonight.
Uh, you know, I'm, I'll just weigh in there. I didn't get this agenda until I just sat down and seen this, so I, I had this all typed up in my computer at work, but not with me.
Oh.
So do we wanna?
I, I, I didn't see it, cause I don't, I don't, if I don't open this tablet and look at those emails on the city, I don't get them.
Okay.
And so I would only say that if you guys redo something from Friday, maybe a text message out, because I review it and I reviewed it earlier this morning, and then all of a sudden I'm like, oh, this is different, and I looked at that and I'm like, okay, I don't have that with me.
I went through mine at six this morning, yeah, I didn't, just seeing the different change.
Well, we can do that next Tuesday, I guess. That's fine if you wanna do that.
Could do a closed session next.
I did not, I did not prepare, cause I was thinking it was next Thursday. I did not see, again, I look Sundays and that was, I was.
I think that makes sense for us to do it Tuesday and.
Okay, let's do that.
Do we wanna bring anything else on? Is it, is that the only thing we're gonna do on Tuesday? Is there anything we also wanna bring? Uh, is there something, maybe if we send a couple ideas to Rebecca that she could put on the agenda that we could? We just, we could have it, we could have it open and then close it when we start doing, so we can cover the stuff first and then.
Or we could start as a closed, cause we have to, you have to kind of.
Yes.
Yep.
Summarize that, that we did, so we could always open it after and.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think our review, the review process itself isn't gonna take that long.
Well, I don't know, I got a lot.
It's first one, it's better.
Five stars. Okay, that's, that's good. I think we're, we don't really need to do anything. Let's maybe let Tori know if you wanna reach out there.
Yeah, I, I told her that I'd let her know which way we decide tonight.
And, you know, whenever we get ready, we'll give her some notice and bring her back out here. Good deal.
Perfect.
Also, there was a reminder also from Becca that Sheriff Digman is gonna come and meet with us.
Yep.
Yes.
Our first meeting next month, and if there's any questions, we'd like to question him, him, question him on, would like us to submit the questions, so he has a chance to, to get some answers for our questions, so if there's anything, anything you have for any citizens that have confronted you on different items, I mean, I've had a few people stop me wondering on stuff and I, I actually dropped the left list off to Becca this afternoon, so I got just some of the ones that were fresh in my mind, so.
We can bring those Tuesday too, to the meeting.
Well, yeah, just to so he has a chance to look it up and figure it out. If it's our first meeting in February, we've got some time, but if you think of it, bring them with, so she can put them together.
Yeah.
Yeah, good deal. Okay. All right, any other discussion on the city manager's newsletter? If not, we can move on to the next item on the, uh, agenda, and that's a If not, we can move on to the next item on the, uh, agenda and that's a, item B, proposed tree planting plan. And, uh, do we need to take any action on that or is that just for information or?
No. Well, I have it in here and, and, and maybe you don't do a motion, but maybe a motion approving it since they're recommending it or.
Well, I don't, I don't really see a plan. I mean, they're just, it's just saying that they're gonna plant the trees on a certain day and.
They're gonna plant it at, um, at the campground. They've decided to plant them at the campground and, um, they're looking at hackberry, American, w- windin', um.
Is this because we've talked about how they should let us know where they're planting? I think that's where this is coming from.
That's what this is coming from.
So, they're just saying this is where we're gonna plant this year's planting in the, in the park.
And so, they're looking for, yes, and so they're, it's from the, the bathrooms to the gate and in that area where we lost a bunch of trees this year. And there's a lot of trees that in the next ten to fifteen years will probably be coming down as well. So, they're trying to, um, get ahead of that additionally, um, yes, we've, we've, we've asked them to come up with a planting plan and then come up with some species, um, that they'd like to plant. And they'd also like to, they've historically gone with cross. Um, I forget if it was, I think it was Bailey's, um, is the, is another provider. But they're gonna go with, um, if approved, they'd like to go with taller trees, just less quantity. So, we have less potential maintenance up front. Um, you're still gonna have to do pruning and watering, right? But, but that's what, what they're looking at there. They all meet, um, they all walked around with Russ and have approval. Russ at the meeting said that, that what they've discussed would be within his budget, so.
I guess just some of the other parks, we've put trees right where our sidewalk would probably be down here at Green River Park. So, just any potential sidewalks and I'm sure Russ hopefully has looked into that. But just trying to avoid spots if we're connecting and doing sidewalks and potentially from this shelter over to this particular area, if there's a potential for sidewalks going in, that they could try to plant around that. So, you have a sidewalk, you can go from point A to point B instead of having to wiggle, snake through them, just.
Yeah, and so, part of the, part of last week, um, they had, we had our meeting last Wednesday and there's a couple of members on the tree board that are going to different conferences towards the end of the month. So, starting to look at, again, different providers like, like Bailey's and some of that, that they can start talking about, uh, potential negotiation, stuff like that. So.
Where we can get the best deal, the best trees and like you say, and it makes sense if you have the small trees that get beat up with the different things. Yeah, you spend a bit more money for a taller tree, but you, you do a lot faster growth to get it up to a, a six foot or eight foot, whatever it is versus that small little two, three footer. So, yeah, I think it makes sense.
And like I say, out in the park, you know, they, we lost a lot of trees out there and that's a, a good spot for them. So.
Yeah, I, I think overall that bringing it through to us for approval is just to, I think, uh, what Jeff said too, is just in, in inappropriate spots. You know, not under power lines, not, not in areas where, you know, just to plant a tree. Let's, let's, let's do a good job. Hey, maybe like you said, we, we get a little older trees that, you know, we can get started, uh, as many. But, um, I'm all for that, just to, let's get them in the right spot. And we have lost a ton of trees out there in the last three, four years.
Power lines, power lines.
Yeah.
And to your point, Russ is doing locates and, and the city is pre-digging all the holes, so.
That's awesome.
Should have that figured out.
Great.
Thanks, Zach. Good information.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, on the other business, on the other business portion here, uh, we, we used to have an opportunity for board member updates.
Yeah, do we, do we need approval on that or are we, you think we're okay?
I think you're okay. That's fine.
I mean, we can certainly entertain a motion in a second if you want.
I think, I think we, if it's brought to us and we ask for it, I, I would, you know, I think we should entertain it.
Okay.
You know, as, as we talked about, I would.
Alright.
I'll make a motion to approve their, uh, their plan as it states.
I will second that.
Alright, we have a motion in a second to, uh, approve the proposed tree planting plan. Halls in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Halls opposed, same side. Motion carried.
And a thank you to the tree board again for just informing, so we know what's going on if people are asking. And it's like, yeah, here's what's, what's going on.
And, and due diligence and looking for tree services to find a, a good deal on getting a tree cheap, uh, the most, least expensive. So, the dollars go farther.
Okay, now we can move on to the other business. I, I see we used to have that line item, board member updates and that somehow has dropped off the agenda. That's really our opportunity. I just open it up to members of the various boards. If, if they have any updates on the boards that they're sitting on, we should make sure we put that on there. Cause I think it's important, you know, we all sit on these boards and just, uh, give her, you know, the council members a, an up, an opportunity to bring something to the council, that there's something we need to be updated on. That being said, is there anything anybody has on, uh, either upcoming or any important information that we should know about? Annual chamber board banquet's coming up, uh, January thirtieth. That's the next Wednesday, I believe. So, that'll be kind of a big deal. January thirty-first it is, I think.
Wednesday's the thirty-first.
Yep, the thirty-first, yep. That'll be a little number one and it's always a fun night, but it's kind of a main thing I had, I guess. Anybody else have anything?
No, but in boards, can we, um, maybe the next time we're looking at updating our website, update the board members in each board so that we know that their meeting time and everything is in the right spot? Cause I think the library board might have a few more members. Tourism board with.
You know, are we still maintaining our website, updating it on different things?
Well, we're paying for something monthly, so.
I just, somebody had said that they looked at there was some old information that looked a little dated on our website, but I don't know.
More than likely.
The case.
There was probably some rotated information on there.
Just got some challenge, I imagine, but.
Yeah, need to get better at that.
Who oversees that? Is that you or?
Yeah, um, we have a company that can help change things and we believe that, um.
Are you working with them to help do that?
Well, all of our learning here, doing all kinds of new learning right now, so is that one of the things that?
So.
They charge per request.
Yeah.
Above their base, so that was the hope, was to get padding and updating.
Sure, sure. Just their base to have the website?
They just to host the website.
Just to host it, correct.
We ask them to do update, they'll do additional charges, so.
But there, there's a portal you can go in and do that stuff. You just need training on, on how to do that.
I just can't emphasize how important that is. And I know we're working on it, but I think, but just because people do go to this website and look. And if you got out today, out of date stuff, it's like, whoa, kinda, yeah. So, and I get we're, we're new and learning all of it, but it, it kind of is.
It needs to be a priority.
And if you have questions with members that you're comfortable with or somebody you know to contact to get information.
They need to be on there.
Yep.
The, uh.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, no.
Park board, uh, Russ was out and tore out the horseshoe pits out to the park. Nobody was using them. It was pretty dilapidated, gone to heck. Uh, it was a boy scout project for one of our high schoolers ten, fifteen years ago, but just wasn't used. So, that's gotten tore out, which we've discussed, I think, a little bit here and just some of the stuff we're working on. As you see, the handicap swing, uh, Fergie had mentioned possibly trying to do a concrete slab in that area and maybe doing a pickleball court out there also, just one of the future products. It just seems like the pickleball has gone bonkers all over with people playing it. The, the courts are very busy down in Green River Park and over at Wells. So, just some ideas there and what we'd need to do and maybe just pour a concrete slab and do a pickleball court out there. He normally does a nice job and writes out, writes up the minutes, so I'll try and remind Becca if she can to post those on for us to get with our, our next packet, just so everyone can see what, everything that was discussed. But I think that was the meat and potatoes of our last meeting.
If we can keep our eyes open too, Becca, for, there occasionally, I think the state of Minnesota offers grants for park type improvements and.
Yeah, those usually come out about March.
Mm-hmm.
Just kind of watch for that. Maybe we can get some, capitalize on some, some grant money and.
And we're talking there on possibly trying to do something with the bathroom concession stand over at, uh, Wells just for doing some upgrades there. The bathrooms need some attention, but we were gonna try to do something maybe with a grant. See if we can, some funding there.
The, uh, uh, planning commission, um, I, I had both of mine last week and obviously we've brought the, um, boards and commissions' updates to them. But, uh, planning commission, the one thing that they, one of, one of the things that was brought up was that, um, we don't necessarily ever see any formal minutes from planning commission. And so, if there's something, for example, uh, last year when we approved the conditional use permits for the couple of residences for lighting, um, um, we wouldn't necessarily, they would act and then we would get at the next meeting without seeing any formal minutes. But if there's anything that we wanted or needed, um, that, uh, that, they'd, they'd like having a little bit more communication from the planning commission, whether it be the chair or representative to, to council. And obviously, you know, sitting on that, I have every right and I, and I try and be as communicative as possible. But they'd requested potentially coming in and sitting in and giving updates or whatever, uh, at our request.
I think that's fine. I don't think you can over communicate too much. If they wanna come, they're more than welcome.
So, looking for a potential invitation, I guess, is, is what I'm looking for, uh, or, or they were looking for, I would say.
So, they want a formal invite?
Potentially, potentially, which isn't necessarily a bad thing either.
No, no, that's great.
So, um, the other thing that was brought up in both of them was, uh, question some of the, some of the language, right? Uh, planning commission, for example, there was a couple of things that is the meat and potatoes, what they do, that wasn't necessarily spelled out in the overarching of what the planning commission was. Um, a couple of them, a couple of individuals questioned the logic behind multiple people on multiple boards. Um, or, you know, single individual on multiple boards, things of that nature.
Yeah, as we approach spring here, you know, we know that in the planning commission, I think they get probably more things presented to them as we get closer. So, maybe sometime in March would be a good time to bring them or February, it'd be fine. I don't know, do you wanna just maybe tend at least pick it, should we just pick a time or they could come? It's March or February or?
See, they felt that they were more, if there was something that the council was going to make a motion on or approve.
Like the ordn, like the.
Yes.
Taproom, room, that they would like to come before that, during that meeting and explain what they're, what they're thought process.
Correct, yes.
That's what I'm taking it or what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So, they just don't come to present, cause they don't meet every month, so.
Right.
No.
But when they meet, it's usually to discuss.
Something like this, yeah, exactly.
So, we're talking about bringing the commission or the chair?
I would say the chair.
So that they can answer questions about why, what they're, why they're recommending this.
Yep.
So, that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there was an example that was given, and I forget what the example was right off the top, but that was, that was something that was, that was very adamantly discussed in the meeting. Was if, you know, like I said, that almost an open invitation to come in or a formal invitation to come and present, which again, I have no problems with.
So, they're meeting on the twentieth, right, to consider the brew pub thing?
They meet the third Tuesday of every month. Is there a scheduled time?
If they have something to deal with.
Would they like to come here before that, you think, or, or doesn't it matter to that?
So, they're, that's, that's theirs to present, to pass, to send it to us.
Yep.
So, ours would be after, so on the twenty-seventh, at which point the twenty-seventh would be probably the best one to have.
The meeting that.
Have them come in the February twenty-seventh meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. You wanna just give the contact information to Becca and she can invite them or, yeah?
I feel like Becca knows the chair.
He does, okay. Okay, good deal. That's good.
Yeah.
Alright, February twenty-seventh, we'll have them hither. Anything else on any of the other boards? Hearing none? Any informational items? I think we've probably already talked about a little bit about that. If there's no other business to come before the council, I shall adjourn the meeting.